The citizens of Rockwall, Texas are about to choose three new council members and the three frontrunners that aren't afraid of tough questions are here in the bunker. Because it's that time again, time for some straight talk. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen and this is a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. Greetings thrill seekers, music lovers, conversationalists from across the fruited plains of the great state of Texas. I am your host, Bunker Bob Steinhegen, bringing you an in-depth look at the three frontrunners running for city council in Rockwall places one, three, and five. And I'm grateful to have you watching today on the bunker cam via rumble, YouTube, or Facebook. And welcome my podcast listeners who are out walking, driving in their cars, or wherever they're listening via Spreaker, Spotify, Google Podcasts, Apple Podcasts, Deezer, iHeartRadio, Podchaser, or Podchase Attic, just to name a few. Now, this is the fifth election season that I have held these forums, which provide candidates the opportunity to put their best foot forward and is why, as I have always done, along with the invitation to participate, each candidate received a copy of the questions to help them decide if they want to participate, which also helps ensure that you'll only hear from serious candidates that are willing to answer hard questions. Now, rather than trying to cover countless questions that limit candidates to short-form answers, I focus on 10 questions, including one that allows each candidate to speak to issues that may go unaddressed, all without time constraints, so we can drill down on each issue. However, when a candidate goes especially long or meanders off topic, and sometimes they do, it will be edited down for time while ensuring that the key points remain. Through the magic of video, the illusion that all the candidates are in studio at the same time is created, even though each candidate sat down with me for a one-on-one interview, which is edited together to make it look like they're together. This is why I will ask follow-up questions of one candidate, but not the other, and why the candidates do not respond to one another's answers. In fact, the first time any of the candidates will have heard the other responses will be at the time of this broadcast. Now, before we begin, I let each candidate know that they can re-answer or restate anything they say, because the purpose of this forum is to allow them to be the best that they can be. Well, this is edited to alternate who speaks first and last on each question, and to determine who I begin with, I ask each candidate to pick a number between one and 100, and since Melba Jeffis came closest, I'll start with her introduction. Well, Melba is a native Texan and her husband Stan moved to Rockwall in 2004. Melba retired from the Dallas County Community College, having worked in financial aid, marketing, and communications and information technologies. Melba has been a local activist and volunteer for two decades. She is a 2005 graduate of the Rockwall Citizens Academy and served on the Architectural Review Board from 2006 to 2012, and on the Rockwall Appraisal Review Board from 2014 to 2018. An active member of the Rockwall Republican Party since 2008, a fact I can contest, she has held several offices in the Republican Women's Club, including the Office of Vice President from 2011 to 2014, and President from 2014 to 2018. Melba received the TFRW, that's the Texas Federation of Republican Women Tribute to Women Award, and in 2019, received the Rockwall County GOP Chairman Award. In 2019, she was also awarded the RCRW Woman of Influence Award. In 2024, Congressman Patrick Fallon awarded Melba the United States Patriot Award for her dedication to service to our community. Melba and Stan are members of Rockwall First Baptist Church and have one daughter, Jennifer Jeffis, who is a teacher in Mesquite and lives in Fayette. Stan and Jennifer are also involved in serving Rockwall as team leaders of the Rockwall Fire Department Cert Group. Melba, great to have you on the show today.
Thank you, Bob. I'm glad to be here.
Well, now let's meet Richard Henson. Now, Richard is a Christian conservative, dedicated community servant, and a local businessman with deep roots in Rockwall County. Since moving to Rockwall in 1997, Richard and his wife Sharon have been actively involved in various community activities, demonstrating their unwavering commitment to making Rockwall a better place for all its residents. Richard's professional journey is marked by entrepreneurial success. He and Sharon founded Lake Point Marina Incorporated, acquiring and building a marina on Lake Ray Hubbard before selling the business in 2005. In 2007, they established Henson Land Services, Inc., where Richard serves as landman and vice president of a family office in Dallas, investing in the oil and gas industry. Beyond his business endeavors, Richard has dedicated countless hours to community service, including as a Meals on Wheels volunteer, a school board member at Heritage Christian School, volunteer YMCA coach for more than 20, primarily basketball teams, a Sunday School teacher, and both Sharon and him were also a licensed foster family through Buckner Children's Home and Rockwall CPS. That's something I didn't know. That's pretty cool. His involvement in local politics is equally impressive. Richard is currently serving his second term as precinct chair for the Republican Party, where he serves on the county executive committee as the Get Out the Vote Chair, and as Chair for the Resolutions Committee at the county convention, something, and this is how Richard and I know each other, this is how we get our platform, and he and I have worked together on this for, gosh, been three, three conventions, I think, yeah. So it's been a great, great experience for me, and we've had a lot of fun doing it, I will say that, yeah. He also attended the Republican State and National Conventions in 2024. Richard's wife Sharon is the Rockwall County Chair for the Republican Party and is involved in the 2050 Comprehensive Plan for Rockwall County. Together, their collective time spent volunteering in this community, get this, exceeds 3,000 hours per year. I would have thought it was much more, the way you guys go, but no, they're always going. Richard is also a deputy voter registrar, typically registering voters at their church, San Jacinto Square, and other city events. Now, he and Sharon celebrated their 30th wedding anniversary in March, and are the proud parents of Jayce, who's 27, and Joshua, who's 25. Richard, great to have you on the show, man.
Oh, so excited that you reached out to me to do this.
Absolutely.
Been looking forward to it for a week.
It's a long time coming, because honestly, I've thought about having you on the show for other things, like when we start doing our resolutions and platform committee stuff, you need to come back, and let's have fun with that as well.
I'd love to do that.
Yeah, alright.
And I know I was the chair of that platform committee, the Resolutions Committee, but the last time or two, you were co-chair, if not even more, I think.
I was your vice, I was your, I was your wingman.
You were, and actually probably had more time at the podium than I did, and I liked it a lot.
We had a lot of fun, definitely.
We got a lot done.
Absolutely.
You know, the cool thing about that is, we went through those resolutions and we sent them to the state convention, and we wound up with 40.
Oh, yeah.
Of Rockwall County's resolutions wound up on the state platform.
A lot of.
What an accomplishment.
What an accomplishment, absolutely. It shows how strong Rockwall County is, and what a leader we are. Alright, well now let's meet Dennis Lewis. Dennis is a dedicated and active member of the Rockwall community. Alongside his wife Clarissa, Dennis moved to Rockwall in 1993, where they raised their three children, all graduates of Rockwall High School. With a strong commitment to his community, Dennis has served in various capacities, including as a planning and zoning commissioner, city council member, mayor pro tem, and currently, and most importantly, I think, as vice president of the Rockwall A&amp;M Club. That's so cool.
We both think that's the best thing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's good bull. Well, professionally, Dennis is the vice president of Potter Concrete LTD, a large turnkey contractor. His involvement extends to numerous organizations such as the Rockwall County Planning Consortium, Rockwall Economic Development Corporation, and Meals on Wheels Senior Services of Rockwall County. Dennis, it is great to have you on the show again.
Well, thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be here.
Just out of curiosity, how long have you and Clarissa have been married now?
We've been married 46 years.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's really awesome.
So, we're very fortunate.
You are.
I'm very blessed, very blessed to have a great family.
You sure do.
A great wife and great family.
Absolutely. Alright, well, the first question is an easy one, why are you running, Dennis?
Well, I mean, you and I know each other. I generally care for the city of Rockwall and the citizens of Rockwall, and I'm happiest when I'm in service to others. And I have a strong desire to make things better, to make things better for the good. And I don't always hit that mark, but that's just because I'm human.
You're not perfect.
But I'm always trying.
You're not perfect.
I'm always trying.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll be the first to admit that, and Clarissa will be the second one.
I think it's the other way around.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Yeah, alright, well, very good. Melba, how about you?
I love Rockwall. Stan and I moved here because it was the city that most followed how we felt about living our lives. It was a, it was a family-oriented town, it was a small town, it didn't have high density, and frankly, after I got here, I found one more reason to live here, it was 82% Republican.
That's true.
But, in the last few years, maybe 15 to 20 years, things in Rockwall have changed dramatically. We have found ourselves one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation.
The second, I believe.
I think so.
Yeah, behind Kaufman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for a while, we were number one. Kaufman was behind us, and then they took us over. As a result of that growth, we now have some serious problems in Rockwall. Density and infrastructure are the two biggest problems that we have in Rockwall. And if we don't fix those situations, we're not giving our citizens the quality of life that they deserve. The life that we moved here for, we came here from South Garland, and we literally ran from South Garland, but we moved there, Stan got out of the army in 66. We built our first home, and we stayed there for over 30 years. It had a great school system, it was, it was the place to live at the time, but over those 30 years, it became something that we couldn't tolerate anymore. In probably about 15 to 20 years after we moved there, they started building these really big apartment complexes down on Duck Creek. About 30 to 35% of those apartments were dedicated to Section 8 housing.
Wow.
And as soon as the first apartment complex was built, we started having problems with vandalism and break-ins, and Stan's vehicle, he had a big extended van, it wouldn't fit in the garage, so it stayed in the driveway, never had been a problem until then. It was broken into several times. Stan looked at me and he said, "Get us out of here." I want to go to Rockwall anyway, I've been wanting to live there all my life. We got out here, and three months after we moved here, I got a planning and zoning notice in the mail. We bought five acres down on 549, was Stan's dream, to return to his farming roots. So he said, "Let's just go," there was an old ostrich farm down the road from Stan's, "let's go to that meeting and find out, I bet it's the ostrich farm, let's go see what they're gonna do." We get up there, they bring up the overhead, and Stan said, "Oh, no." I said, "What is it?" He said, "That's on our south property line, and it's a housing addition, a very dense housing addition." So, we talked to city council, we talked to planning and zoning, they told us it met the comprehensive plan, there wasn't anything they could do about it, but they didn't agree with the vision for that housing addition either. It wasn't what they wanted in Rockwall. So, it was too dense, the quality of the houses were not that nice, so it kept getting voted down, and for four years, I never missed a planning and zoning or a city council meeting, for four years, while this was in the works. At the end of those four years, it finally passed, but when it did, it was a very nice housing addition, much larger lots, much nicer homes, and that housing addition is what you see today as Fontana Ranch. It would have never been that housing addition if Stan and I had not dug our heels in and fought it for four years.
So, so why, how does that translate to now, running for city council?
It, I discovered I have a passion for city government. At the end of that four years, I had become fascinated with planning and zoning and city council, and I continue to go to those meetings, and I have for 20 years. I've, I've missed some due to surgeries or illnesses or whatever, but for the most part, I've been at every city council meeting for 20 years, and every planning and zoning meeting. During that time, I've watched council and planning and zoning change. The councils we had in the early 2000s, Ken Jones, Bill Cecil, those people had a vision for Rockwall, much different from what the vision has, has become in the last few years. They were not in favor of high density. I'll never forget a statement that Bill Cecil said one night. He said, "I don't want to drive down the street and just see rooftop after rooftop after rooftop." Well, we've come a long way from that vision. I want to take us back to the councils of the early 2000s, and one of the people that was on that council, when I was fighting Fontana Ranch, was a young man, a very young man, who had, was just new on city council, named Tim McCallum.
That's what I was wondering, okay, I was wondering if you were going there.
I formed a bond with Tim McCallum and Matt Scott, the other city councilman that helped us, and they navigated us through those waters as we fought. I fell in love with these two young men, I call them my adopted sons. And they were there every step of the way for us, to the point that, when, the night that it passed, they had given land, or sold very economically, land to the ISD for an elementary school, which is Sharon Shannon Elementary. And that school was going to be on our east property line, directly behind us, and then the city park that they were doing was going to be on the east side of the school. Those two young men said, "No, you're not doing this to the Jeffis', you're gonna flip the park and the school. The park will be behind the Jeffis', and the school will be behind the park." So, we got the very best that we could have ever hoped for. It was gonna pass eventually, but it's a very nice housing addition now, with a beautiful elementary school. So, that was what spurred my love of city government, and I've never wavered from it. I'm fascinated by it, but I'm also concerned today about what I see in our city government.
And I guess we're gonna be talking about some of that.
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Richard?
Oh, gosh, that's an easy one. You know, Rockwall is a great place to live, and obviously, a lot of people think that, they're moving here from, from all over the place. It's, it's got the beautiful lake, we've got outstanding schools, the people are wonderful, weather is debatably great most of the year. But I've discovered in recent year that Rockwall has some challenges, you know, and some of the challenges they have, I feel like I am uniquely qualified to address, you know, typically, and we'll get into some of these other, the heart of this and some of your other questions, but traffic and density and that kind of stuff, so.
Excellent, alright, well, thank you. Well, though the race for mayor or city council is technically a nonpartisan one, which political party best reflects your values and why? Now, this one for all three of you is going to be an easy one, so actually, I'm just gonna ask a kind of a different question, why are you a Republican?
So, I align with the Republican values, just like you do. We've had this conversation before, I mean, if you look at our platform, just the first one is supporting the laws of God. You've got the support, the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. You don't see Democrats have any of that stuff in their platform. I believe in protecting human life, especially innocent in the womb. The Bible says that He knitted us together in the womb, so He knew us before we were even born. We were people then, individual freedom and liberty, and the rights to defend myself. I believe in constitutional carry, I'm carrying now, brother, so I am a Republican at heart.
And what I found interesting was, one thing I read about you is, is your sons learned to shoot when they were very young.
Yeah, they, I often say, they both owned their own semi-automatic firearm before they were 12 years, 12 years old. Before you judge me on that, they were 22 caliber, so they still both had their own at that time, and now that they're adulting, they have their own firearms at their home.
It wasn't too long ago that that was not abnormal, and I don't know where we got to the point where that, some people think that's abnormal. Do you agree?
Agree.
I mean, yeah, thank you, Richard. Dennis?
Well, I'm a Republican. The Republican Party to me aligns more with my values, whether those are moral values, physical responsibility, public safety, obeying laws, adhering to the Constitution. Republican Party to me aligns more on what my values are, and just so you'll know, I think the Constitution is the second greatest document ever written behind the Bible.
Amen to that, I agree with you. That's awesome, thank you, Dennis. Now, Melba, I know that you are a Republican, obviously, but why are you a Republican?
Because that party best matches everything that I believe in so strongly. I am a very devout Christian. I believe in pro-life. I believe every life is sacred from the moment of conception. God has a plan for every baby that is born.
Yeah.
But also, I have strong family values, and the Republican Party matches that for me. They're also very dedicated to a lower budget, lesser taxes, they want you to manage your own life, they don't want to manage it for you, and I like that. I like them staying out of that. My husband is, spent six years in the military.
Wow.
During Vietnam.
What branch?
Army.
Army, alright, regular army.
He got out, he was a first lieutenant. We believe in protecting our country, we believe in the flag, we believe for everything that the flag stands for. So we are, we are a flag-waving Republican family.
Well, God bless you. I love it. Well, the next question is, what is your vision for the city of Rockwall? Melba?
Lower density, fix our infrastructure, and listen to our citizens. That's another thing I've noticed over the last few years, as I've been going to all these meetings. People come to council, they come to planning and zoning, they take advantage of that three-minute, that three minutes that they have to get up.
Citizen comments?
Yeah, that they have to get up there for open forum and talk. But I'm telling you, I can't even tell you how many times I've seen councilmen and planning and zoning commissioners sit there scrolling on their phones, looking at their watch, they're not paying attention to what these people say. I am going to be a strong voice for our citizens, they will have all my contact information. I want to change Rockwall and take us back to the days of the early 2000s, when we had lesser density, we had better infrastructure, and our roads weren't so congested. One day, I had to leave First Baptist Church and drop off some papers at my doctor's office at Rockwall Presby. I pulled off the church parking lot at 11:15. Do you know what time I pulled into Rockwall Presby?
I have no idea.
12:20.
Wow.
One hour and five minutes.
Wow.
To go from Rockwall, I mean, from.
First Baptist.
First Baptist to Rockwall Presbyterian.
My goodness.
I sat through cycles.
Are you really that slow of a driver?
No, no, I'm not, no, in fact, ask the Rockwall Police. I was the first person to get a speeding ticket on John King. I had no idea it was only 45 miles an hour.
Oh, well, I think a lot of people just learned something, so that's good, okay. My goodness, so why, so you were, you were in light after light after light.
Many cycles of each light.
Yeah.
We have to fix this.
Yeah.
I'm surprised we don't have road rage in this town.
Well, I think we do.
Do we?
I just don't think we hear about it, you know?
Oh, okay.
And it's usually from people outside of Rockwall, because we're also so nice.
Well, people are, of course we are. People are so frustrated with the fact that we have this construction on 30, and then we have this, this absolute nightmare of traffic inside the city of Rockwall.
Yeah.
We're gonna listen to our citizens, I want to see citizens come back. I would love it if every city council meeting after I'm seated, I look in the audience and every chair is full. I want to hear from our citizens, I want them to participate in our government.
Excellent, thank you very much, Melba.
You're welcome.
Dennis, how about you?
Well, you know, we hear three things, a lot of people want to live, work, play, and retire in Rockwall. It's the school district, the quality of life, and the small-town hometown feeling, and I'm dedicated to all of those, even enhancing those, but you can't have any of those that live for a safe community. We've got to provide our police and fire departments with everything they need to succeed. We have to continue to do the things that hometowns do, our parades, our Christmas tree lighting, our downtown Christmas, our Founder's Day, and all the programs that our awesome Parks and Rec Department puts on. We've also got to maintain our growth by controlling zoning and making sure we have good quality development and good quality developers.
Very good, thank you. Richard?
Great question, you know, and Rockwall already is an aspirational city, like I said earlier, people are moving here from all over the place. I would like to make it even more aspirational, want to make it a place where people can raise their families here for generations to come. I've seen other cities make some mistakes, and I often tell a story, if it's okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
When I was a child, we, we would get all excited each year, we came to Dallas, usually in the fall, we'd come to buy our clothes and our shoes for the school year. It was a two-hour drive, we're from East Texas, and I remember excitement as we were driving to Dallas, we're going to Dallas, and we'd get there and turn on to 6:35, and there it was, Towne East Mall. For a 12-year-old kid, Towne East Mall was Dallas.
Wow.
And really, you know, at that time, Mesquite was a crown jewel city of Dallas suburbs, right? A crown jewel suburb.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you fast forward 40 years, 45, 50 years, and I don't see Mesquite as the crown jewel city anymore. As a matter of fact, I can't take my wife over there. Remember the Restaurant Row used to be so vibrant over there, and it doesn't seem to be that way anymore. In the defense of the city council and planning and zoning folks at Mesquite in those times, there was no history to evaluate the effects that high-density housing had on a community. But now, we have a roadmap of how not to do it. You know, the crown jewel city of Dallas suburbs now is Rockwall.
You're right about that.
And I want to learn from the mistakes that other cities have made, and not let that happen here.
Wow, excellent. Well, Dennis, this question is for you, since you are an incumbent city councilman, what has been the biggest challenge for you in carrying out your duties as a city councilman?
You know, most of the decisions we make, we're gonna upset some citizens and we're gonna make other citizens happy.
Sure.
So, we've got to do our due diligence and gather as much information as possible from as many sources as possible, and then make the decision for Rockwall as a whole. And let's be honest, you know, from your experiences in McLennan-Chisholm, a lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. Well, the next question is, how often do you attend city council meetings, and what have you learned from that experience? You know, you, you obviously are one of the rare people who attend city council meetings.
Some nights, it's me and Stan Jeffis sitting in the audience.
I believe that. So, so what have you learned from, I mean, you've, you've been doing it so long.
Some of the things I've learned are not very positive.
Okay.
And the top of that list is, I don't think our citizens are being listened to, I don't think they're being respected, I think they are being taken for granted. I want to be that voice for our citizens on city council. I told you, I've been going for almost, almost nonstop for 20 years, to planning and zoning and city council. So, I'm probably the most experienced person in this town with what happens up there.
Even, you know, I just realized, you've probably been to more than most of the city council members have.
Oh, yeah, because they're on for three, for three terms of two years, and they're gone.
Yeah, yeah, that's interesting.
So, it's, it's something that's very frustrating to me. There've been two big fights in city council here lately, where citizens were there en masse. One was IKEA, the other was the Jupiter, Juniper Development at 549 and 205. That's a massive number of houses. The citizens were there, they got up and spoke, sometimes it was 10:30, 11 o'clock when we got out of there. But guess what? It fell on deaf ears, except for Tim McCallum, he listened.
Wow, very good. Thank you very much, Melba. Richard?
Another great question. I've been attending city council meetings and planning and zoning meetings for about four years.
Oh, wow.
It first started with higher-density development coming in close to my home, and I was on the mail-to list, and in that particular zoning case, we had 100% of the people in the mail-to area had protested, opposed to the development. That development passed seven to zero, and that was when I realized that I need to become more involved in Rockwall politics. So I started going to those and advocating for lower density in developments many times over the last several years. I have always been kind. I have always been kind and respectful at each meeting I've attended. And we've had some, sometimes we win and sometimes we don't. But I'm always in the fight, fighting against the high-density, yeah.
Excellent. Well, the one issue that concerns every citizen in Rockwall County is the exponential growth, which includes housing, commercial development, traffic congestion, and of course, growth in government, which means higher taxes, and is why we're going to tackle each in turn. So let's start with the explosive growth in housing like master-planned communities or multifamily apartments and townhomes. Do you think the city is on the right track when approving these new developments? And are they contributing to or taking away from the lifestyle that citizens of Rockwall desire? And why or why not? Richard, how about you?
So as you likely know, this is the first two pillars of my campaign. Number one is to reduce development density, and number two is improve roads and infrastructure. That the fact that our current city council has been voting to approve these types are my number-one reason for, for running. Don't get me wrong, I am pro-growth and I am pro-development. In many cases, I believe our, our city council votes on certain projects because the projects conform to our comprehensive plan. Or somewhat conforms. Sometimes they'll do that. We have to be careful and not have the Lucy Charlie Brown scenario where, okay, the developer reads our comprehensive plan and they build a model, spend a lot of money, building a model to come propose, and then we put that football out there and they swing, and then the city grabs that back and say, oh, not really. So you kind of have to avoid that. So the root of our problem with the higher-density development is the comprehensive plan. And we can dig into that more later.
Yeah, so, you know, just because you have a comprehensive plan doesn't mean that the council can't go around it. And that's been, I think, one of the, the, kind of the problems with, with how high-density development gets, gets approved despite the comprehensive plan. So, so as a member of city council, how are you going to ensure that, that those, that you follow the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, great question. First of all, our current comprehensive plan allows for two homes per gross acre. If you compare Rockwall's comprehensive plan to the comprehensive plan of Heath, for example, they allow for one home per developable acre. So the big difference there is they do not get to capitulate or calculate the floodplain into their zoning. So the minute you leave Rockwall, say you drive past Chandler's Landing and enter the Heath, you'll see a drastic difference. You see 50-foot side yards instead of six-foot side yards. So day one, what I would like to do is immediately address our comprehensive plan and adjust how we calculate our density. That way, we have that out there and developers know before they show up with a plan that we would consider high-density. As a matter of fact, I think two homes per gross acre is high-density. Our current plan allows for a 62-foot wide lot. To give you some perspective on that, you and I live in what I would call an estate lot. Our homes are, my home is 85 feet wide. So if I bought two of those, I would just have a normal-sized side yard. So you don't really see that when a developer proposes it on a map, on a screen. You just see little squares. But the, the density comes in when you start looking into the details. Our current plan also allows for a six-foot side yard. So if you have a plan that has a low-density definition of 62-foot wide lots and a six-foot side yard, how many homes do you think will be 62-foot side yards and six-foot, six-foot side yards, 62-foot wide lots? All of them. If you, our current plan doesn't even have a definition for what you and I would call an estate lot. There's not, it's not even defined. So if there's no definition for an estate lot, how many estate lots do you think the developer will put into there?
All of them, right? They'll call all of them an estate lot, is that right?
Right, a 62-foot wide lot. So, and there's a, there's a purpose for that. Not everybody wants to mow a big yard. I would just like to see a mix, you know, of estate lots, mid-size lots, and yeah, some 62s. But the way it's currently structured, all we get are 62, 72s, you know, the smaller, higher-density calculation-type lots.
Very good. Thank you. Melba?
You know, growth is a healthy thing for a city. You don't want to see a stagnant city. That's not healthy. But it has to be controlled and managed growth, and you have to do it smartly. This is why I want citizens to come to council. I want them to be involved in this. Let the council know you don't want high-density. You don't want multifamily. You will never, ever see me cast a vote for another multifamily housing addition in this town. If I'm correct, we have right at 3,000 apartment units, multifamily units in this town. That's all we need. We don't need any more.
Very good. Yeah. Thank you, Melba.
You're welcome.
Dennis, how about you?
Well, you know, I think this council and prior councils have mostly gotten it right. I think we're all committed to low-density. You know, the Unified Development Code, the UDC, which City of Rockwall's adopted and most cities have adopted, define low-density as two units per gross acre. And a gross acre includes the open spaces, the green spaces, the floodplain. And some people don't understand that. They want it to be on the net acres with, with the net acreage, with the floodplain, the open space, the green space taken out. But as a council, we can't say, we're going to apply the UDC to this development, but not to this one. We have to be consistent. And you know, when Chris and I moved here in 1993, the Kroger was where 24-Hour Fitness is.
Oh, wow.
Walmart was where Hobby Lobby is, and it wasn't a supercenter. The Cinemark was where the dialysis center is and the CC's pizza shopping center. There were less than 12,000 people here, and people were talking about how Rockwall was growing too fast. So my point in saying all of that is the growth has allowed us to do some good things. It's allowed us to upgrade our facilities. It's allowed us to have a hospital. It's allowed us to have retail and restaurants we didn't use to have. When we first moved to Rockwall, there were only a few restaurants. El Chico was here, El Trevino was here, Cajun Catfish, which is not here anymore, was here. But if you went to any other places or do any shopping, you had to leave Rockwall. We don't have to do that now. And the growth has allowed us to do that, but we do have to properly maintain that growth.
I see, yeah. Very good. Well, study after study shows that tax incentives don't pay off in real economic gains, but that hasn't stopped municipalities from offering tax breaks or even using taxpayer dollars to fund infrastructure projects as a way to attract commercial development and certain businesses. Now, this, of course, puts government in the position of picking winners and losers on the backs of taxpayers. So where do you stand on this issue? And how should the city go about deciding when it's appropriate to use incentives like tax breaks or taxpayer-funded infrastructure projects to attract businesses and commercial development? Dennis, how about you?
Well, I think for the most part, the tax incentives the city's done have worked. Some of the projects that have been incentivized are the hospital and Costco, the Hilton with the conference center that a lot of people in the city use, have to pay for, have to use, the Spring Hill Suites and others. And every business in the technology part has been incentivized in some form or fashion by the Rockwall Economic Development Corporation. So those type of incentives don't come up very often, but when they do, we have to look at it as a whole and see if there's benefits for the city of Rockwall, to the citizens of Rockwall. The latest one that everybody's talking about is IKEA. And before IKEA came along, we had five major intersections left on I-30. Three at FM 3549 and two at John King. And for me, for those corners, I want good-quality developments with good-quality developers. And the department part of the IKEA development gave me pause, but for the most part, it's a good-quality development. We structured it as such so that the IKEA has to be under construction. There's more than 200,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space going in. So we've structured it so that the IKEA has to be under construction and 140,000 square feet of that retail and restaurant space has to be built before the apartments can start. So another consideration for me in that was over half of our city budget comes from sales tax. Well, Costco's building in 40, so there's some sales tax going. Lowe's is talking about building in Roy City, so there's test-
Wait a minute, Costco is, is in Rockwall?
Costco's going to build in 40, too.
Oh, okay, so they're going to add another, okay, gotcha.
They're going to build in 40 as well. So the IKEA development is receiving $3 million incentives from the Rockwall Economic Development Corporation. The RDC is a Type 1 economic development corporation, which means they mainly focus on manufacturing, industrial, and not retail. But they can do infrastructure projects. So they're providing an expansion to Justin Road, which we need, and a D-Sa Lane off of I-30 Service Road. The city of Rockwall is providing 8.5 million dollars in incentives, and that comes from a 40% rebate of the operations and maintenance part of the property tax rate and 40% of 1% of the sales tax for 40 years, I mean, for 15 years. So, and it's based upon IKEA's sales projections. In, in that 15 years, over and above what the rebate's going to be to IKEA, the city of Rockwall is expected to take in over $69 million in property and sales taxes. You project that over a 20-year period, that number goes up to over 102 million. So when considering incentives, which don't come up that often, we have to look at the totality of everything involved to make our decisions.
So I think, I think the question is, the IKEA was approved. The incentives actually, it's my understanding that the council voted on the, on that tax rebate after it had already been approved. Can you, no?
IKEA was not coming without the incentives.
So y'all had not approved it first?
We had not approved that first, no. And trust me, it was some discussions between our city management and IKEA for a while. Those incentives started out way more than what we're looking at today. So it was not approved before the rebates. The IKEA was not coming without the rebate, without, I'm not saying rebate, without the incentives.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. Melba, how about you?
I'm not a fan of that 380 agreement at all.
Which, which, are, what are you talking about?
The 380 agreement is that incentive plan.
For?
The tax incentive plan to bring businesses to Rockwall.
Got you.
Not a fa, not a fan of it. The most recent example of that is what the city gave to the IKEA development. I wish you could, I wish we had a little clip to play of how many people were in the audience at city council speaking against IKEA, especially the 500 apartments, which they thought they were doing us a huge favor by lowering that, lowering that number of apartments to 487. Whoopie.
So, so IKEA demanded that they have apartments as part of the deal?
It was a, it was an all-or-nothing thing.
Because that's their target market, is apartment dwellers.
That's right, and college students.
And college, exactly.
If you drive through any college campus at the end of the school year, you will see piles of IKEA furniture on the side waiting to be picked up off the, off the, the side of the road.
That's right, yep.
That's a, that's a built-in customer base for them. Plus, they said in the meetings that this was going to draw people from as far east of here as Shreveport to shop and bring their tax dollars to Rockwall. I'm not opposed to people bringing their tax, their sales tax revenues to Rockwall. That's a great thing for us.
Sure.
But I don't believe that's what's going to happen. I think that, and you know, this is a smaller store. This is not a big, this not, isn't a big IKEA.
Oh, no, I didn't know that.
This is a smaller box version of it. But it's still going to be a big, ugly, blue thing as you come into the east, eastern entrance to this gorgeous city. I, I think if we had waited, we didn't have to have something in that location today. Why didn't we wait for something quality? People want to, businesses want to come to Rockwall all the time. As an example, HEB. HEB is a great thing to come to this city. That's a quality development. That's going to bring enormous sales tax dollars to this town. Plus, HEB wanted to be here. They had to have a light installed on John King for that side entrance into HEB. They said, oh, no, the city doesn't have to pay for that. We're going to pay for it.
Well, how much tax breaks did, did HEB get though?
Zero. They were offered, and they, they said they didn't need them. They were coming to Rockwall.
But IKEA-
I don't know, and I can't tell you whether IKEA asked for the 380 or not. I know that at the very next city council meeting, when the meeting started that night, they approved $11.5 million in a rebate to IKEA, the IKEA development. So I don't know if they asked for it or not, but they got one.
Now, you know, Dennis, Dennis has said that they would not have come had they not gotten that rebate.
I don't believe that.
Okay.
I love Dennis. He's a very smart man, but I don't believe that. IKEA wanted Rockwall. They were, they were courting Rockwall big time. They weren't interested in Roy City. They weren't, and Roy City and Fait have tons of apartments.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of multifamily. That's who buys this stuff. Why they didn't go there, I don't know, but they wanted Rockwall. We didn't have to give them a dime, but we did.
Very good.
That's my personal opinion.
Very good. Thank you very much. Richard, how about you?
Yeah, I think my answer will be a little bit shorter on this one. So I think they call these 380 plans where you, you may trade city capital, bond money, even infrastructure or property for a particular type of development that you would want. As a rule of thumb, I'm not excited about incentivizing businesses with our citizens' tax dollars. I think their businesses should stand on their own. That being said, I would listen to something, especially if it included, I'd like to see us have a large civic center, you know, something where we could have conventions, a convention center, something like that. There may, could be a conversation there.
Well, but that's not a, that's not, I mean, a civic center is typically owned by the city. So I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, for instance, IKEA is coming in, and IKEA has been given some, some tax break, basically. Some that, that they're, I forget what, what the exact number is, but, I mean, how, how do you feel about that kind of thing?
Yeah, so I would have never voted for a, a tax incentive for IKEA. That deal had already passed city council, and they came back after it already passed, after they'd already closed on the land and asked for a tax break. I, I just don't see that as being prudent with our taxpayers' money.
Very good. Thank you. Well, it seems like regardless of where you live, traffic congestion is getting progressively worse, which is beginning to have a real impact on the quality of life for many. What can the city do to improve this problem? Or more specifically, what will you do as council member to address the increased traffic congestion that's so agonizing for so many? Dennis?
Well, you know, all of our major thoroughfares, north and south and east and west of Rockwall are state highways. That's fortunate in that the state, the citizens of Rockwall don't pay for the expansion, the maintenance of those roads. Now, any government money it has is a citizen's money. Which bucket does it come out of? The unfortunate part of that is we don't control those roads. I very gladly serve, as you mentioned earlier, on the Rockwall County Planning Consortium. We prioritize road projects in the city of Rockwall and entire county. They go try to get funding for those projects. And we have a very good relationship with Tech dot, with North Central Texas Council of Government and the Regional Transportation Council, which we all get funding from. And with the voter-approved $100 million county road bond program in 2008, which is 8.5 million dollars left of that, we're able to prioritize our projects, get the engineering done, get the utilities relocated. So when the funding's available, we're shovel-ready, we're ready to go, and it makes a difference. And the voters approved in 2021 another $150 million in county road bonds to do the same thing. And you know, I'm very proud of the fact that when I was on the council prior, we had a citizen-approved road bond program for the city of Rockwall of $80 million with no tax increase, and that's hard to do. For city streets, you know, I'm not opposed to trying to put more streets in the budget. Even maybe spending some reserves, although that gets very tricky. I'm also not opposed to identifying the city streets we need to expand. Need to, and the developers generally build them with the developments and, and dean them over to the city. These city streets we need work on. I'm not opposed to going to the voters and seeing if they want to approve the money to improve those roads. Another thing that's going to help is the outer loop that's proposed on the east side of Rockwall that goes from Collin County all the way down into Kaufman County. And that's projected, I saw the projections of the traffic relief the other day, and it should relieve a lot of the north-south congestion and a lot of the east-to-west congestion as well.
Wow. Very good. Melba, how about you?
I told you that I have priorities day one, sitting on that dais. And one of those priorities is to fix our traffic. Did you know that in the last 15 years, we've passed two big bond issues to fix traffic?
Yeah, at the county level. Yes, yes.
And not one dime of it has been spent. Let's, let's get a, a plan together. Let's get people figuring out where we want to do this. Where are the worst impacted traffic areas in this town? And let's start fixing them. The money is there. And so we need to get busy fixing it. Let's work with the county. You know, John King was approved by the councils of the early 2000s, the ones that had a better vision than we currently have. Can you- Can you just imagine, and there was a lot of opposition to John King, can you just even imagine what our lives in this town would be like right now if we did not have John King? John King is, is the only major thoroughfare that's not just gridlocked. So that alone shows you that those councils had a vision and we need to go back to that.
Very good, thank you. Richard?
Yeah, so Bob, I have a plan. I, I really have a plan, and I've already talked about our comprehensive plan adjusting that and getting that better aligned to reduce density. If we could have, uh, we recently reduced the density of the Juniper project. It started out as 1,170 homes on 500 acres. A hundred of that was floodplain, so it's really 1,170 homes on 400 acres.
Wow.
Um, and we fought it. The neighbors came out and finally, uh, the city council voted no. So very next month, uh, they're right back in our face again, but this time it's 950 homes. And we fought it and they said no again. Finally, the fourth time, they came back, it was 870 lots. That's a 21% reduction in density in that one neighborhood, that one development. That would be 21% less cars on our roads. Uh, I wish I would have done this a decade ago, and if we could have reduced the density on the, the neighborhoods out on the north side of town, for example, uh, people wouldn't be sitting at that traffic light at the CVS for five, six light cycles to get through.
Yeah.
So part of it is the density calculation comprehensive. Pillar number two of my campaign is we passed a road bond in 2008, voter tax, the voters voted for a road bond 2008, and again in 2020, I think it was. We have millions of dollars in our coffers, and to my knowledge, we have a road consortium committee that hasn't deployed any significant capital for any road projects in five, six, seven years. So my, uh, day one, again, I say day one on the comprehensive plan, but day one too, I'm immediately going to start going after that money. And I want to talk about that.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned earlier, uh, I, I am a landman by trade. Sharon and I founded a company called Henson Land Services, 2007. One thing Henson Land does is we get out typically in front of a, a drilling rig for oil and gas about a year in advance, a year and a half in advance, and we pave the way, so to speak. You can't just show up with a rig and start drilling holes. So we secure the rights, uh, subsurface for them to drill a hole down there. We secure the rights for them to build a five-acre pad. We secure the rights and we build roads. You've got to be able to get in there. Sometimes we cross 50 people's land to get in there. So I'm buying right-of-ways and rights to build, and those are permanent roads, right? We're acquiring the rights and we're building pipeline right-of-ways. So all of these challenges that Rockwall has are in my wheelhouse.
Yeah, you've done this.
It's what I do for a living.
Wow.
So it's something that I'm going to bring to council that we haven't had before. So the way to build a road, the way we do it in the private sector, is you get four bids, you hire the least expensive one to do the work, you hire the most expensive one to oversee to make they do it right. And you turn in a purchase order. So that would be the same approach I would take to roads in Rockwall. I'm going to do exactly that. Then you've got the municipality and the county and the state regulatory issues to go through, but then you're just putting out fires as you go. Once you get that purchase order in there, then you start saying, okay, here, what's the objection here? And you start overcoming, and next thing you know, you've got a road.
So I, all right, first of all, I love this because you, you, you're bringing, uh, private, uh, private business mentality to government. The, the challenge, I think, i- is, is that, you know, as a member of city council, you're, you're not really a managing council, you're a governing board, basically, a board of directors, if you will. The city manager is who runs the city. And while you may have all of this business acumen and, and expertise, uh, what's to say that they're going to even listen to you? What, so, so is, have you thought through that? Do you have a relationship with the city manager or any of the members of the staff that, that might help facilitate your engagement in this?
Yeah, so, so my exposure to the staff there is I think we have some of the brightest, smartest staff, uh, at city hall that I've seen in any city. And I deal with municipalities. We sometimes have to, uh, build drilling pads inside city limits, and we do that often over Arlington, Fort Worth area, because it's, uh, the oil and gas is produced right in amongst houses sometimes. And I've never seen any, any, a crew as quite as accomplished, um, and competent to do their job. I feel like, uh, with, uh, the task at hand, they're driving the same roads you and I are. They're going to gladly go out there and let's get some of these road projects done.
Excellent. Well, President Trump initiated the Department of Government Efficiency, or DOGE, which not only uncovered outrageous waste in our federal government, but also exposed an entirely new generation to the reality best articulated by President Reagan, who said that government is not the solution to our problems, government is the problem. Well, what is your philosophy about municipal government growth and where do you draw the line between what constitutes an essential government service that warrants taxpayer funding and wasteful spending that should be prohibited? Richard?
Yeah, and I'm going to repeat myself a little bit. I have a tremendous amount of confidence in our city manager, Mary Smith, and, uh, our city leaders and, um, and our staff, and I have a great deal of confidence in Police Chief Ed Fowler. As a businessman, I understand large budgets, I really do. I look forward to collaborating with our city leaders, uh, on how we can save capital within our city's budget. So, yeah, that's, that's it.
Very good, very good. Dennis, how about you?
You know, I'm not going to disagree with one of my heroes, Ronald Reagan. So my philosophy of central government is it should be as less intrusive as possible. And you know, Romans 13 in the Bible states there is a need for central government, so, so I agree with that. But central government needs to function in the role it was created to establish and not get beyond that. And you know, our property tax rate in Rockwall is 24.745 cents per $100 of assessed value. That's low. That's low. And we're still able to maintain our city services and our city functions. And you know, our city manager and staff and prior city manager and staff and this council and prior council have been very fiscally responsible. And the tax rate, as you mentioned, has decreased the last 12 years, and I'd like to see that continue. Um, in the 2013, 2014 fiscal year, the city of Rockwall had 6.57 city employees per 1,000 residents. In the 2023, 2024 fiscal year, the city of Rockwall has 6.74 city employees per 1,000 residents. So we're not wasting money. I, in my opinion, we operate lean and mean, and that's the way that it should be.
Sounds like it, thank you. Melba, how about you?
Well, I really believe that our city manager, Mary Smith, does a very good job of, of working with the budget that she's given for Rockwall. Budgets increase over the years because population increases, infrastructure needs increase. But as I, as I have observed in council meetings, I think Mary Smith's doing a very good job with it. I'm sure that, you know, our budgets need to increase over the next few years because we've got a lot of things we've got to fix. But I really think Rockwall does a very good job of managing their, their resources financially.
Very good, thank you. Well, property valuations have increased at such astronomical proportions that every city in Rockwall County has continually lowered the municipal tax rate year after year while still increasing revenue. Under what circumstances would you support an increase to the city's tax rate? And would you support an increase for the next fiscal year? Melba?
I will never support a tax increase for the citizens of Rockwall. The appraisal district takes care of that without any help from us.
They sure do, don't they?
I pay more now for my taxes and insurance on my house three times as much as I paid for the payment on our first home. Or no, four times as much.
Wow, yeah.
It's, it's amazing to me.
Yeah.
And it, we've tried fighting it, it doesn't do you any good. And, and I'm sitting here as somebody that served on the appraisal review board.
Oh, wow, yeah, yeah.
It, it just falls on deaf ears.
It does, yeah, I agree.
You know, that's the only job that I was ever fired from.
Is that right? What happened?
Well, this is back when we had Patricia somebody for our, our head appraiser. She came to my house and told me they weren't going to renew my contract because I was too sympathetic to the taxpayers. Only job I've ever been fired for.
Wow, golly.
So that tells you how I feel about taxes.
Well, that does, it sure does, wow. All right, well, thank you. Richard?
Ooh, I would not want to ever be on Rockwall, uh, Rockwall City Council as being on record as having voted for a tax increase.
Love it.
That being said, I would always listen to the citizens. So the only scenario I would see is if the citizens showed up, and you know they're not going to do that. And say, I want you to raise our taxes.
So you don't see them, uh, carrying torches saying, raise our taxes?
Yeah, that's not going to happen. So yeah, my pledge would be, I, I do not ever want to be on, on record as having been one of those guys.
Yeah, yeah.
To have voted to raise taxes.
Love it. Dennis, you just got finished talking about the tax rate and how low it is. What do you think?
Well, in general, I'm opposed to increasing property tax rates. We're very fortunate in Rockwall, we haven't had to do that.
Yeah.
Um, in general, and, and that's, that's a general statement, because you, as you well know from being in city government in the past, there's things come up that you can't anticipate. Uh, but as a general rule, I'm, I'm only agreeable to increase property taxes to maintain city functions, city services, and to add policemen and firefighters. Now, there's a perfect storm that could brew, you know, with over half of our budget coming from sales taxes, if our sales tax level out or decrease and our property values level out or decrease, and you home starts slow, then we've got a perfect storm there that wouldn't probably necessitate a tax increase. But generally, um, I'm against tax increases, but I don't believe there's any slack in our city budget.
Very good. And what about, what about this next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year, I don't anticipate us having to, um, increase property taxes.
Very good, thank you, Dennis. Well, are there other issues that we haven't talked about that you plan to address if, uh, elected or re-elected? Dennis, if you're re-elected, what about you?
You know, we're having a needs assessment done for facilities in the city of Rockwall. I would like to see that needs assessment finished in this next year, and so we can just start planning for the future. Uh, I want to get additional road projects within the city of Rockwall added to the priority list for the Rockwall County Planning Consortium.
Okay, excellent. Melba, how about you?
I want to find a way to encourage our citizens to come to planning and zoning and city council meetings. I want to be the voice that gets them there and fills that room up. I want them to know what's going on, because if, and I know you, like me, you read Facebook, you read Rockwally, and you, you read all of our, our links on Facebook. The thing that people complain about the most are the things that have already happened. If you go to these meetings, if you read, the agendas come out, they go to everyone in the city on Friday afternoon before 5 o'clock, that's the deadline. So you know what's going to be on the agenda on Monday or Tuesday, whether it's city council or planning and zoning. Come to the meetings, especially if there's something on there you're interested in. Come up there, you have three minutes at open forum, and I promise, I promise you all this, you will never see me look at my phone or look at my, my watch while you're talking in those three minutes. I'll listen to you. So come, be a part of the city, be a part of what happens in the city, and give us your, your thoughts, your goals, your ideals for what we need to do, because we're there to work for you. We are your representatives to make this the city that you deserve to live in.
Thank you. Richard, how about you?
So yeah, um, Bob, there is, um, so long-term water rights is pillar number three. I ha, have an unusual perspective on this. Uh, before we got into the marina business back in the 90s, uh, I was looking to get into the boat and RV storage business. And so I was out looking at land and I, uh, I put a contract on a piece of land over in Rallett off Cheez-It Road, if you know where that is, close to the lake. It's a dial rock road. And 17 acres, and I wanted to put a boat and RV, so I started going through the planning and zoning process. And so the way that works is you invite some of the, you know, one-on-one, one by one, you invite them, uh, P and Z guys to coffee or to lunch, just to say, hey, this is kind of what I'm thinking. Is this something y'all, does it fit what y'all are doing? And the, the second guy I spoke to, P and Z guy, he invited a gentleman to join us, and his name was Mr. Jones, we'll just call him Mr. Jones. And so at the very first sentence, we're sitting there at a coffee table, not unlike this, he says, "Mr. Jones, what do you think about Mr. Henson's proposal to build a boat and RV storage?" Right next door to where he lived.
Oh.
So Mr. Jones, and I, I respect, I respect that P and Z guy tremendously, because instead of just looking at the paperwork the day they come, he's out there in the community finding out what the community wanted. So Mr. Jones immediately looked at me and said, "Mr. Henson, I would not be in favor of you putting a boat and RV storage." But let me tell you, um, why. My family's land, Mr. Jones said, my family's land is underneath that lake. We had 150 acres of land underneath that lake. So when the city of Dallas built the lake, they came to Mr. Jones and said, "Mr. Jones, we're, we're getting ready to take your land, but we have a proposal for you. We will trade you your land that's going to be under the lake for 70 acres," and I don't remember the exact acreage, "of high ground land over here off Cheez-It Road." The point I'm making is that the city of Dallas, when they got ready to build the lake, they had to deal with Mr. Jones. So my vision for long-term water, um, the, the Texas, uh, is planning to build another lake out up on the Suffolk River, Marvin Nichols is probably the next one on the horizon. It's about 75 miles north and east of here. So what if, uh, what if Rockwall are, what if our county went out and acquired water rights? I do it for a living. I get water rights so that we have drilling foods for oil and gas development, so I know how to do it. What if we got out in front of that a little bit and acquired some water rights up there? You know, this idea may or may not work, but if it did, and they come, and they get ready to flood that lake, they're going to see Rockwall County or the city of Rockwall having record title owning some water rights, and they're going to have to deal with us. And then back to my landman skills, get us the pipeline and bring that water home.
Wow.
So I see that being a long-term water, potentially. And of course, we'd have to work with North Texas Water District, and we'd have to work with the county. There's a lot of moving pieces there, but it's potentially, uh, thinking outside the box, a way to secure long-term water for our community.
Yeah, you're, you're definitely not, uh, you don't have a short-sighted view of, of, of anything, it seems like. That is a, that's a long-range plan, because you're talking, you know.
Yeah, we're 50 years out.
Yeah, boy, that's, okay. I love that. I mean, that's, you're unique in that, in, in that regard, so excellent. Love hearing that.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm sure the voters will too. Well, now is your chance to tell voters why you are the best choice to be their representative on the Rockwall City Council. And with that, Richard Henson.
Yeah, hey, thank you, Bob. You know, it's, it's, um, sometimes being humble and talking about your accomplishments are, aren't well said in the same sentence, but you know, we've been community servants for decades, uh, as you read earlier in my bio. Um, you know, I'm elect, I'm currently an elected official as a precinct chair for the Rockwall County Republican Party. The good news is, for all of our issues that we may have, I have a plan. I have a plan for Rockwall that's going to improve our city in a lot of ways. We're going to reduce our development density, and I've laid out my plan for that, and we're going to improve our roads, and I've laid out my plan for that. I'm going to secure long-term water rights. I will always support first responders and children's education. I would just say, uh, when you go to the poll, it's going to be April 22nd through 29th, there's early voting, and then election day is May the 3rd. That's only one week of early voting, and election day is a Saturday, not a Tuesday, a Saturday. So go vote, push the button for Richard Henson for Rockwall City Council. I'll work hard for you. Thank you.
Dennis Lewis?
All right, well, I don't just speak hollow words, I put them into action. I don't mind getting my hands dirty, working for the citizens of Rockwall. You mentioned earlier what I've served in the past, uh, for the city of Rockwall. The city of Rockwall City Council appointed me to fill a vacancy on the council in December of 2022. I ran for that position in May of 2023 unopposed, and now I'm seeking reelection for that position now. As was stated previously, I am on the, one of the city's representatives of the Rockwall County Planning Consortium. I'm one of the liaisons to the Rockwall Economic Development Corporation. I serve on the Hotel Motel Tax Sub Committee, I'm the city council liaison to the city's art commission. I very proudly serve in the nonprofit sector as well. I'm chairman of the Board of Mills and Wills Senior Services of Rockwall County. I've been working with Mills and Wills for many years, and that's a labor of love. I'm very proudly endorsed by the Rockwall Professional Firefighters Association. I have proven leadership skills. And I try to be a servant leader by putting God first, my family second, others third, and myself last. So I'm Dennis Lewis. I'm running for reelection for Rockwall City Council Place Five. I would cherish your vote and I would appreciate your vote.
Melba Jeffis, take it away.
My name is Melba Jeffis. I'm running for Rockwall City Place Three, and my vision is controlled and planned growth, lower density, improve our infrastructure, no more multifamily. And I will be a strong voice for our citizens. I want to listen to them. I want you to stay in touch with me. I want to give our citizens the quality of life that they deserve in this incredible town that we live in. My name is Melba Jeffis. I'm running for Place Three City Council, and I hope I've earned your vote today.
Well, as you can tell, all three of these candidates truly desire to earn your vote. If you have more questions of them or wish to know more about their campaigns, I've posted links to their websites or Facebook pages in the description of today's show. Early voting begins on Monday, April 22nd and goes through Tuesday, April 29th, with election day on Saturday, May 3rd. Now you're watching this because you want to be an informed voter. So be sure to share the link to this program with your friends and neighbors who can vote in this race. So until next time, I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen, looking forward to seeing you at the polls. Blessings.